Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the public hearing for Interstate Waste Services Incorporated, the Sejo Transfer Station and Material Recovery Facility in the borough of North Arlington. Tonight's public hearing is on the topic of the air permit and solid waste facility permit modification application submitted to NJDEP. Next slide, please. For brief introductions to who we are, my name is Brent Schick. I'm a managing consultant with All4 LLC. All4 is a multidiscipline consulting firm providing expertise and support in permitting, compliance, and strategy in matters including air and water quality, health and safety initiatives, and sustainability goals. I'm joined by my colleague, Merritt McGlynn, as a managing consultant with All4, as well as Curvin Macario, who is helping us facilitate the meeting behind the scenes. We're also joined by Jim Anderson, the Director of Engineering with Interstate Waste Services Incorporated, who will be listening during the meeting. Next slide, please. A few comments on the format of today's meeting. All comments are welcome. We welcome any comments. And if you wish to make a comment, please wait till after the presentation. We'll ask you to state your name and your municipality. Just want to remind everybody, the meeting will be recorded. We'll also provide a transcript and the recording of the meeting to NJDEP for their use in approving the permit and responding to any comments that are received by the interested public. As I mentioned before, please use the raise hand feature in Teams. We will limit any comments to three minutes at the conclusion of the presentation. Written comments can also be submitted after the meeting. These comments will also be provided to NJDEP, who will compile the comments, compose a formal response and comment document, and publish that along with the permit when it is finalized. We're using Microsoft Teams for recording. And as I mentioned before, a written transcription, as well as the recording of the meeting, will be provided to NJDEP. Next slide, please. The agenda for tonight's meeting. After the introductions and summaries we just finished, we want to discuss the meeting's purpose. We'll talk about the legislation and the requirement to hold this meeting. We'll give some background on who Interstate Waste Services is, and some information about the facility. Identify any legal requirements for hosting this public hearing. Provide some context on the environmental and health impacts, and then receive public comments at the conclusion of the presentation. As mentioned before, the purpose for tonight's meeting is for interested parties to share comments, provide questions to Interstate Waste Services, and for NJDEP's consideration. Public comment began January 31st and ends on April 1st, 2023. Comments and questions received during this evening's presentation will be recorded and included in the transcription and provided to NJDEP. Additional public comments will be received by NJDEP through the conclusion of the public comment period. These comments can be submitted to NJDEP directly or can be sent to Jim Anderson with Interstate Waste Services, whose contact information can be found on screen. Tonight's meeting is being held in coordination with New Jersey's Office of Permitting and Project Navigation, the OPPN. The head of the organization is David Pepe. We are required to, under the environmental justice law, to provide a review of environmental and public health impacts in overburdened communities when reviewing certain permit applications in support of the environmental justice law. In accordance with Administrative Order 2021-25, which was issued in September 2021, the order establishes a process for hosting public hearings in compliance with the environmental justice law. Our compliance statement describes our need for the project. The impacts and alternatives were considered. Questions and comments regarding the environmental justice law and the administrative order can be directed to NJDEP to David Pepe's attention. For a brief introduction into Interstate Waste. Interstate Waste Services is a waste collection, recycling, and disposal company. They operate in... They're actually formed as a small collection business in Bergen County, New Jersey. And they operate several facilities in the region, providing an essential service to the region. The facility at the Sejo Transfer Station and Materials Recovery Facility is currently not in operation. The proposed air and solid waste facility permit modifications are to install and operate equipment so that the facility can accept single-stream Class A recycling. Included in the installations proposed in these modification applications are building additional storage, a glass bunker, a new parking area, walkways, storm drainage, and service utilities. As mentioned before, Interstate Waste Services, Sejo Transfer Station, and Material Recovery Facility currently operates under solid waste facility permit. And as part of the process, Interstate Waste Services is required to conduct the public hearings in accordance to the environmental justice law and AO 2021-25. Regarding the environmental and health impacts, there's no increase to the permitted solid waste capacity, types of material, or hours of operation as part of the permit modification applications. The modification of the facility results in increased volume of recycled and reused materials. There was health risk screening evaluation performed in accordance with NJDEP's guidelines, the Risk Screening Guidance. And that screening concluded that the facility is operating within NJDEP's guidance and applicable thresholds. That concludes the presentation for tonight. We'll now open this... We'll open the floor to public comments. As a reminder, if you'd like to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. This time, we'll leave the floor open for any comments, anybody to join to the public hearing. See that Dominic Mazza Jr. has joined. Welcome. Give it a couple more minutes, see if anybody else will join, and then we can... We can start at the beginning of the presentation. We can run through again, and then open it up for public comment. Unless you're prepared to provide any comment upfront, we can take a comment if you have a comment prepared. Otherwise, we can begin at the... We can start at the beginning of the presentation. Doesn't look like anybody else will be joining at this time. We'll start the presentation. Good evening. This is the public hearing for Interstate Waste Services Incorporated, the Sejo Transfer Station and Material Recovery Facility in the borough of North Arlington. This public hearing is in regards to the air permit and solid waste facility permit modification applications. Next slide, please. My name is Brent Schick. I'm a managing consultant with All4 LLC. All4 is a multidiscipline consulting firm that provides expertise and support in permitting, compliance, and strategy in matters of air and water quality, health and safety initiatives, and sustainability goals. I'm joined by my colleagues, Merritt McGlynn, a managing consultant with All4, and Curvin Macario, who is helping to facilitate the meeting and run the meeting behind the scenes. We also have Jim Anderson in attendance, the Director of Engineering with Interstate Waste Services Incorporated. A few comments on the meeting format. Everyone is welcome to provide comment. Your opinions are welcome if you wish to make a comment. We could take comments at the end of the presentation. We ask that you state your name and your municipality. This meeting is recorded. The transcription of this meeting and the recording will be provided to NJDEP for their use in approving the permit and responding to any comments that are received from the public. If you wish to comment, raise your hand using the raise hand feature in Teams. We'll ask that we limit comments to approximately three minutes. Written comments can also be submitted after this meeting through the conclusion of the comment period, which ends on April 1st, 2023. At the conclusion, the comments will be provided to NJDEP, who will compile the comments, compose a formal response and comment document, and publish that along with the permit when it's finalized. Next slide, please. The agenda for tonight's meeting is to introduce the meeting and discuss the format of the meeting and a summary of the public hearing. I will identify the meeting's purpose, talk about the legislation and the requirement to hold tonight's meeting. Give some background on Interstate Waste Services and the facility. Identify the legal requirements for hosting this public hearing. Provide some context on the environmental and health impacts, and then receive public comments. As stated before, the purpose for tonight's meeting is for interested parties to share comments and provide questions for Interstate Waste Services and NJDEP's consideration. Public comment began January 31st, 2023, and ends on April 1st, 2023. Comments and questions received this evening will be recorded, transcribed, and provided to NJDEP. As mentioned before, any additional public comment can be received by NJDEP through the conclusion of the comment period, either directly to the department or to Jim Anderson with Interstate Waste Services, whose contact information can be seen on the screen. Tonight's meeting is being held in coordination with New Jersey's Office of Permitting and Project Navigation, the OPPN. The head of the organization is David Pepe. We're required to, under the environmental justice law, to provide a review of the environmental and public health impacts in overburdened communities when reviewing certain permit applications in support of this law. In accordance with Administrative Order 2021-25, which was issued in September 2021, the order establishes a process for hosting public hearings and in compliance with the environmental justice law. The impacts and alternatives, questions and comments regarding the environmental justice law and the administrative order can be directed to David Pepe with NJDEP. Interstate Waste Services is a waste collection, recycling, and disposal company, operating a facility in North Arlington, New Jersey. They were founded as a small collection business in Bergen County, and today are a regional leader, providing an essential service. The facility of interest tonight, the Sejo Transfer Station and Material Recovery Facility, is not currently in operation, but the proposed air and solid waste facility permit is to install and operate equipment at the Material Recovery Facility to accept single-stream Class A recycling. The proposed installations will include an addition to the building for storage, a glass bunker, parking areas and walkways, storm drainage, and service utilities. To reiterate the need for tonight's meeting, the Interstate Waste Services applications for air and solid waste permit... Solid waste facility permit modification applications trigger the need for the public hearing in compliance with the environmental justice law and AO 2021-25. There is no increase to the permitted solid waste capacity, types of materials, or the hours of operation at the facility. The proposed modifications to the facility only increase the volume of recycled and reused materials. Health risk screening was conducted. It was conducted in accordance with NJDEP's Risk Screening Guidance. And the conclusions of that risk screening, that the facility is operating within NJDEP guidance and is not exceeding threshold levels. That concludes our presentation for tonight. At this point, we'll open the floor to any public comment. As a reminder, please state your name and your municipality. Please limit comments to three minutes. You can submit public comment by raising your hand At this time, we will now conclude the hearing. Thank you.